I ended up.
I hear it right there.
Do you remember that? You mean the fireplace was?
Yep.
Yeah.
That was the greenway there. Oh, did you see the man? I've put it in yet, no. I was trying to plug it in. Yeah, I've cut two sides of it.
Okay, before we get started, just want to go over some house rules. During the meeting, if you want to speak, there's a sign up sheet right up here. You can sign up to speak on an agenda item. If you want to speak on an agenda item, put the item number down beside it. Other than that, there's no talking during the meeting. That way the council can be heard. If you do come up and speak, you get three minutes. Once your three minutes are over with, you sit back down. The council cannot answer any questions while they're up there when you're speaking. Please be respectful of others. There will be one warning given if you're causing a disruption. After that, officers will escort you out. Like I said, please be respectful. There's a lot of complaints that nobody can hear anybody up here. So if everybody's talking amongst themselves, that's why you can't hear them. They're going to try to talk as loud as they can, just so people can hear them. But it's hard if y'all are talking out there and they're trying to talk up here. Other than that, like I said, the sign up sheet right up here. You got one more minute before I hand it over to him and then he calls out.
Well, let me just do this.
And remember, three minutes still on your pocket. And you can't put all.
Just put general conversation, girl.
Only you're right. I've been doing.
Man, I'm just. It started out with backyard. You know how the project start out?
I mean, it's in the.
Simplicity is what I try to.
Man. You might also. In order for simplicity and work.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. You will? We'll do real call. Very good, best here.
Mayor Frostrum, Ladona Wells here. Councilmember Morgan, Mayor President. Councilmember Mary Wood is here. Councilmember Valby, bomb present.
Okay, we have the four president. You will stand.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us together here tonight, Lord. And we just ask that you just be with each and every one of us here, Lord. Lord, I ask that you just be with each and every one of us. As we leave, Lord, to keep us safe. I ask that you give the council the strength and guns that you, Lord, to do what's right for the city, Lord. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Can we have public comments? We had a few that signed up. The first one is, uh, K.T. Michelle Barton.
All right, I'm here to talk about our Cosax annual caring for kids program that we do every year. I'm sure y'all have seen us riding the roads delivering toys to the families around here. We're doing things a bit different this year. Usually we run between twenty and thirty families. We've decided that's not big enough. We're trying to team up with all the city halls around the lake area here. Our goal is a hundred families this year. Uh, we're looking for monetary donations, toy donations. We're going to have boxes set up in businesses all around the lake area here. Uh, we would like to put one here at the city hall if we can. Things have changed a little bit too. We're not going by, uh, word of mouth on what families we're doing. We're going to set it up kind of more like Angel Tree Program. Where we will have these sign up sheets here at the city halls. Y'all know the family, you can sign them up as well. Once they're signed up, as we get closer to our event, which is December thirteenth, fourteenth, I believe, we will come up, pick them up, and we'll actually vet those families out. You know, we don't want to pull up in a driveway and take a hundred thousand dollar court vent because you're signing up. Once that's done, if your family is chosen, we will actually contact the family, come to your house, speak with you, and we will have you and your family write out a Christmas list, and we will personally go shop and fill that list for your family. Just because you're on the list on one of these, that's not guarantee you'll be chosen. However, we will be having a meet Santa Claus, and you can grab a gift. Your kids can grab a gift in our clubhouse as well. That way we've got everybody included. We're running solely off of donations and sponsorships. That's it.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The, uh, next one was John Wells.
So today I'm standing here as a resident. I'm not standing here as a council member. I want each and one of you to know, I have confidence that every man and woman that sits on this council as a council member. I know that the choices that they make are factual. It's what they see, it's what's in their heart, and it's what they feel like they need to do right for the citizens. And I appreciate that because unless you've done it, you have no idea how hard it is. That everything you do is speculated. It's picked apart. It's dug apart. It's smeared everywhere, whether it's good or bad, okay? And I'm just telling you, I'm speaking from right here. And if I get emotional, I apologize. I'm done with the shit smear. Each and every one of these people, they're human beings, all of them, including myself. And if you know me, or even if you don't, but there's several people here that know me. I am not intimidated by anyone on that council, anyone I work for, anyone I'm friends with, anyone I go to church with. I will not be intimidated by anyone. I make my own choices. Ask my husband. I'm the most hard-headedest woman there is. He can tell me to do something and he's not going to like what I tell him, okay? Because I'm going to do what I think is right. So I don't know where all this is coming from, but this is coming from me. This is fact, this isn't hearsay, and this isn't rumors, okay? So let's put an end to that. If you're worried about my well-being, call me up. I'll give you my number. Message me on Facebook. But social media, just putting it out there, really? That is childish. But you're not worried about me. You're just worried about stirring the pot because somebody at city hall thinks that's fun and stirs it up. But I'm done with that. Matter of fact, I really wasn't a part of it until I made a few comments about it after, and I was polite. And then it just mysteriously disappeared. That's okay. So I have two other things I want to talk about. Um, Mr. Blake Armstrong was our attorney. I don't know if you know now that he's not. Um, I guess he resigned because, I'm not going to say any names. Two people from the city went to his office and said that myself and other members lacked confidence in his judgment. I'm a strong person. If you tell me something and if I don't think it's right or if I'm questioning it, I want to understand it. I'm going to pick up the phone and call you. I've called and emailed Blake a handful of times over the years that I've been here. He's always been polite. There's been times I didn't agree with him, but I say, okay, I still don't get it, but okay, you know? Let's move on. That's what you do. That's what adults do. Well, someone told him that we asked for contracts because we were going after him. We asked for contracts because we needed to see how those contracts fell in line with the budget. That's what a city does. We weren't going after Blake. So now Blake has resigned, and we have, I guess, new attorneys that the council member wasn't even, no one was discussed or told about it. I found out about that kind of off to the side. But it's okay, you know, poor Blake. I mean, he doesn't know. But I heard Blake's voice myself today, so I know this is what he's saying was told to him. It's not hearsay. I heard it out of his mouth. Then, another thing. Raymond, please don't get mad at me. This did not come from Raymond, but I'm going to tell this. This is what kind of people you have running your city. A man's father, stepfather, that raised him died. On the day he was at the funeral hall, trying to make arrangements because he's the only child here that could do it? The mayor calls him and asks him to stop by city hall. Respectfully, he does. The mayor knew where he was at and what he was doing. Asked for his resignation. You tell me what kind of man does that? This is the chief of police. He does whatever he can for these people, puts himself in danger, and that's what kind of respect he gets? Over rumor. He asked for his resignation. Didn't go to him and ask him. What kind of persona is that? But yet y'all want to call me a name when I don't show up to a council meeting? Because my husband had open heart surgery and had a complication and I stayed home with him? Y'all are ridiculous. I'm done.
Jenna Shelton? Is that right, Jen?
It is. My name is Jenna Shelton. And, um, I want to discuss, um, these seven points road fees. That my mother is eighty-six years old. And when we got these last year, they were two hundred dollars. And I come down here and I talked to this nice lady in the pink in that little office right there, and there was another gentleman. And I don't know who he was, but anyway. They told, they told us then that that they didn't think it all the way through, that they were going to, they should have gotten an exempt for the elderly, the vets, and the disabled. And they said, we're going to try to get that fixed. Well, my mother lives on a fixed income, like a bunch of the people that's blessed enough to live to be eighty-sixteen. So she gets her taxes this year, and it's went from two hundred to two hundred and twenty. And I called down here and I talked to the city secretary, and she said that it was going to be supposed to be discussed tonight. And, but that she could pay it out over the quarters. Well, when you live on twelve hundred dollars a month, it, it, it's still two hundred and twenty dollars out of her paycheck. You know, how many grants at the roads are crap, but, uh, but I don't think it should have to come from an eighty-six-year-old. And I don't think it should have to come from our veterans. And definitely not from disabled people who live on a small, suburbanity either. So I don't know what we can do to, uh, to get that fixed. Because her paying it out over quarters is not the answer. And some people may think it's just two hundred dollars. But when you don't get but twelve hundred a month, and that's what you're supposed to pay your bills with and buy groceries with, two hundred dollars goes along late. And every once in a while, you know, you need a new pair of glasses or a factory spray urinase. All has to come out of that twelve hundred dollar check. So I hope that, uh, I hope that, and, and I, and, and the city secretary said also that it went out late. But we were up here last October, this is so many she got them last year. We come up here and addressed it. So I don't know what can be done about it, but I sure hope that it can be alleviated. Not her paying out over the quarters. Have I left anything out, mother? No, she's lived here. Her, she, her family's been here forever. One of the original seven points was, was donated by her grandparents. She's lived right here her whole life, her grandparents, her great-grandparents. Her, John Thomas was her grandmother's daddy. That's how long we've been here. And she lives on home place. So not that that matters, just a bit of history for you, but, uh, you know, I just hope that we can get something into a beat, get that. I probably didn't get under three minutes either. But the comment went over.
Are you on the list? Uh, Mary?
Um, I just wanted to kind of bring some problems that, um, council, or at least a few of us, and I think all of us at one point in time have, over the past year, especially since May. Um, there's been a breakdown and a lack of communication between council administration and the mayor. Contacts have been denied and entered into without council knowledge and approval. Policies have been attempted to be changed and administered without council approval. This is a type A general law city, which is council, that council strong for the government. However, things are not being handled that way. Um, council, even if they request information from city, from the city hall, they're not giving it in a timely manner. I requested things back in June. I didn't receive one until last month. Even a public information request, which I did put in a public information request finally, after not receiving what I asked for several times, after several asking several times, put it in that language so that, well, maybe I get my ten-day request as state law states, but yet still didn't happen. So you can kind of see what has led up to my frustrations when I lost my career a little too long ago. Um, all the pointing of fingers that Ladona just mentioned previously. A big part of those accusations have been directed at me and my family. When I signed up for this, I didn't sign up for this kind of stuff. Even though we all know if you're in politics, it's going to happen. And I typically have very broad shoulders of the handling. But it's not fair when it's false accusations. When I'm trying to handle business that's being told to me by administration and sharing that with council and making, and the council ultimately making decisions that people go back behind your back and say that you're the reason that that was done and it was a personal agenda, when it wasn't even my idea in the beginning. Then you have two people in this city who continue to tell the public, citizens, city attorneys, things that are false based off of assumptions that are totally not true. Now we've lost a city attorney because of it. I apologize to that attorney today. I told him that was not my thought or intention ever. Yet it was presented to him by Tom Lauer and the mayor based off assumptions that they had. These assumptions have left a definition of character of council and our city government. I remember when we could sit here and work as a team, but all this chaos and distress that has been made has made it to where we can't even work together without pointing fingers. How can we get the roads fixed and do what we need to do and do what we promised to do when this kind of stuff is going on? I personally went to the mayor myself, employees that went to the mayor themselves, and council members who went to the mayor, asking that he put a stop to it. All that would need to be done is to talk to the individuals that are doing it and ask them to stop. Give them the chance to stop. And if it doesn't stop, then there's repercussions that you can make, not in that stuff. They have personnel policy, they're personnel, they're, um, sections on page twenty-one and I believe twenty-three that states how, what a employee is supposed to conduct themselves. They're not to spread false reports to others. They're not to go around and make accusations about council, definitely defaming this council, discrediting this council, discrediting this council to others. It's a personnel policy. But that has happened. And that's why you see all this social media that brought a lot of heat today. But I'm going to tell you, it's all based on rumors, assumptions, accusations, and untruth. I am one hundred percent about transparency, truthfulness, ethics. My degree, my qualifications, and my position at the current city I work for. All together. If I do something that is unethical, I can lose my job, I can lose my certification, I can lose everything that I've worked so hard to do. And I'm not willing to do that. I'm asking mayor vets to please make the people stop sharing false accusations and assumptions with the public that is causing all this controversy. And let's get back to the team that we have and work as a whole to get things done.
Thank you.
The next one is Gerald. Good?
I'm good.
All right, that's the one on the list. Good. So we have some consent items we need to go over. The approved minutes for special call meeting in August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and regular captain meeting September twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Call me back. The next one is approved by Annas for October twenty twenty-four meeting. Should be listed in your folder.
I'll make a motion to approve the final answers for October twenty twenty-four meeting.
Have a motion from Ladona. We have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? Uh, we have some discussion items. The police department is with the former police officers association. About how many? Want to go over that? I mean, basically, it's, she can explain too, but by doing the police association, when they do the donations like they did for Greg Dale for the car show, it lets them funnel the money for the stuff for the police department. It's actually, it's, it's not, nothing to do with the city. It's all run, checkbooks all run through them. And because if we do it, set it up in the city, the city has, can do, get their hands on the money as well. Doing it like that, it's all state separate, so that's like, you know, probably a lot better if we did it like that.
I, I definitely think that's something that we need to look at and, and move forward with allowing them to do, allowing them to have a seven points police officers association. And I know that they will do additional activities and raise money by doing other things, and that will be a lot easier than trying to funnel it through here.
Right.
Which was kind of a nightmare. So we came up with this plan to do this. They're going to have to do a little bit of work, um, to put all of the policies in place in order to facilitate this. But we've got the startings of it, which is a good thing. And, um, I think there's going to be a couple of different people that are going to be asked to be on this. And with the approval from us, I think this shouldn't be a problem doing this. If everybody's in favor of allowing them to do that. I think it solves a problem for them, and it allows all of our vendors that have had checks sitting for four or five months, um, it will allow them to go ahead and process all those things. Because the whole idea of doing that was to get our fees their vests. And me, I was a sponsor, and he's still having cash my check for four months. So that's, we don't want those things to happen.
No, nothing else.
It doesn't leave a light for seven points in a year. We need to make sure that those things get deposited and people feel like they're actually getting what they paid for.
So if, if we're going to do it that way, the city has no, we have no say so in it, so we don't vote on it.
No, they have their own board and everything.
They have their own board, so we don't even have to vote. If y'all want to do it that way, then we'll just dissolve the one ninety and not even do that that way. I think we busted it this other way. I think we busted it this other way.
You good with that, Chief?
I've already given the money back to the hosts, so, uh, after the last deal where they drug their feet on getting that guy.
Anyway, they set up and y'all can just, that board can run it, spend that money however you want.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, that'll work, sounds good. Okay, the next item is, um, current status on lease agreement for four twenty-two East Central Parkwood.
That's for the, uh, court to make it happen, they did take the twenty-eight hundred dollars.
They did.
Didn't ask anything, and they're, they're doing their cleaning and, and all that, so it's everything they have. It doesn't start until January.
Okay, so I guess it'll be on the future agenda?
Yes.
So that, that's good if they agree, but then we're in. And then the November twenty-third trash day, did you?
And that's eight twenty-five.
Eight to one?
Is this one day?
Yes.
So, just so you, y'all know, it is eight o'clock to one o'clock on the twenty-third, so if y'all need to bring anything up on trash day.
So, do they bring it up here, or where do they bring the trash?
It's, they set a container at that one, there's like six of them.
Yeah, we'll have lots of dumpsters out back, and you can pull through the guys that can help unload all this stuff.
Electronics included?
Ma'am.
Electronics?
Yes. We keep the-
No, no. I don't know on that, because they usually restrict the electronics.
Really?
I would find out.
It's tires, batteries, and any pipes that don't-
Yeah.
Tires, batteries, and pipes are a couple.
Most times they'll take the paint if the paint are completely dry. As long as it's a liquid, they will not take it. And we may be able to get one dumpster for electronics, and we just may segregate that.
Question on the dumpsters, um, is who's donating the dumpsters, or we pay for the dumpsters?
The trash can.
Trash can, provider.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
We're paying a word to wash it down.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, we got justice back to number six. Review and reconsider, and I don't know, the special call meeting on September twenty-third, reconsideration, where best is, but that's one ninety, so if we're gonna do the other, we don't, if y'all gonna open it under the other, is that what y'all wanna do?
I believe that's what Chief wants to do.
Is that good, Chief?
I mean, that's fine, like I said, I gave the money back to the host after that last thing.
Okay, alright.
The association is running the bank account. That way it keeps the city out of it.
So, Chief, are you saying that you refunded all the money?
No, I gave it back to the host.
That hasn't been refunded.
That, that way-
They're holding it.
That way if the people come and wanna get their money back, the host has got it, so. So, we can.
I'll make a motion not to open the separate bank account at Prosperity Bank.
We have a motion not to open it?
Not to open.
Not to, okay. About a second, all in favor? Have a motion, Chief? Not to open it? So, number seven is review and consider request for proposals for services being solicited to assist the city in its application and administration of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Texas Department Agricultural Community Development Block Grant Contract. It awards to support the road and street rebuild and maintenance plan in the city of Seven Points.
Okay, I've been busy working on grants, and several of them I've been working on. This one is a grant out of the, uh, city builder's office, State Agriculture, and it's for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And there's a CDUG grant, uh, which is Community Development Block Grant. Um, it requires that we hire a service to administer it and do what we need to do. This is a matching grant, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand because of our population, we qualify for two percent, so the match is, I believe, is fifteen thousand dollars, and that's it. And because we're using it for roads and, uh, streets, we can take from, uh, airborne taxes for the roads and streets and use that money to pay that fifteen thousand. All of the other expenses for whichever of these two firms that we hire will come out of the grant. One of them, I believe Langford is the one that alerted us to it and told us that it was here, and I believe theirs is seventy-five thousand dollar total cost. And the other is a group that I've, uh, had some dealing with over in one of the other cities I work for, and theirs is, I believe, fifty-eight thousand. And both of these are firms that do this kind of stuff as a way of life, they administer grants. Their job would be to come in and do all the paperwork for us, file all the filings, do everything, let us know what our part is. They would administer it, they would set up engineering, they would do all of that.
If we don't get the grant, we don't have to pay the fee.
Nope. And the good thing about this is it's a grant, so there is no bad.
Oh, is there a way to get- Is there a way to get letter of recommendations from these folks?
For the two of us, I should get in.
So, before we make a decision on who we choose, that really has something.
We wanna be sure we do it quick though, because we've got a window, so it may call for a special call meeting to come in and make that decision if we want to do it tonight.
And will there be a scoring factor?
I'm thinking so, yes. But that also-
Is it, they, they behave like a, a bitter and ardent league?
Yes. It's all gonna be done just like they would over there where we work before. Um, they would actually manage the entire thing, and they would let us do what we need to do, so our hands would be in.
Very little work on this thing, so it'll be done. Where should it all enter deadline?
Uh, I'm not sure, but I've been told that we need to have it by the end of the year, and this is already the middle of November, so I don't wanna wait too long. It's supposed to be awarded like midsummer. Yeah, it's gonna be midsummer, if there's a while, we'll see.
Well, neither the holidays, anyone would be this time.
We're, we're, we've been advised by Langford that we have a really good chance for the seven hundred, it's gone from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty, and we've got a good chance at all. So that would be seven hundred and fifty, not seven fifty split among all the cities. Now, this is roughly gonna, and this is the one thing I'm battling with, and you all may be too. This grant is gonna pay seven hundred and fifty thousand for engineered roads. And what that means is-
And make a lot bigger cost.
Oh, well, it's gonna be much better than what we're gonna get.
They will be better roads, but they are gonna be much more expensive roads.
Yes. That's also one hundred and two, they do culvers and everything, so they do it, they engineer the culvers, they shoot the grain, they do it all. My challenge on this thing, just from my perspective, and it's not my decision, but that's the kind of road we actually need on Pritchett and Just Him, because that's where all the traffic is. And I like to do the chip seal and everything else that's smaller. Uh, my problem is we can do chip seal on Just Him and Pritchett a whole lot earlier than we can this. It's about a year and a half before they get started. And those guys and the folks up there, they wanna see more going on than Just Him and Pritchett.
Problem that we're gonna run into too, though, is seven fifty and being up.
Well, that's what these people are gonna tell us. Their total cost is, if we go with the fifty-eight thousand, so we're gonna be looking at about six hundred and nine thousand if we go with that. And that's all, that's all worth.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think we're gonna get a fraction of a road versus a full road.
Yeah, that fifty-eight thousand is actually gonna be total cost for their services, so they'll leave us probably about six hundred and ninety, I just gotta know what their cost per mile, or per, per hundred feet anyway, I'm gonna say.
So, I'm assuming that the administrator has some rough estimates, I mean, they're not gonna give us exact numbers, but they could probably give us some rough, rough estimates of the total cost of, so we picked a road. Or what that would be.
We came in a little late, so we didn't have the blessing, or the luxury of having them up here to speak tonight. But, um, we could probably table that, but I'd, I'd probably like to have a special call so we can get them more of this a lot earlier than this time next month, we'll get kind of dangerously close to what maybe our firms want.
Do you know how long it takes them for their process?
Uh, for the initial process, I think it's gonna be a couple of weeks, but this whole process is gonna take a while.
Or I could do member.
They've got to do engineering and everything, so we probably need to have that member out the end of the month.
So, can we schedule that?
If you like. And I'll get you what you need, including a couple of, uh, people up to it. It's, it's a big decision, I don't expect you to make it tonight, but we do need to make it pretty quick, and we can't tonight. But we still have, they said because we haven't had a CDUG grant here in a long time, especially of this nature, because of our population, because of the condition of our streets, we got an excellent chance to get it as long as we can.
Yeah, I'm not open there with CDU grants, but I've, I've done two over the past year at the city's office. Um, anybody leaving for holidays? No?
Maybe not on my couch.
Well, we need a schedule. A special call meeting. And, and, yeah, and maybe Charlotte can reach out with a few dates and everything, see through that, um, because Andy's not here. We'll say four, you'll have to have this four council members present to proceed.
Sophie, I have need to prepare a date.
What we could do, we try to, we get hold of them first, and then they're available, and then if I get a couple of days, then we pass them on to you. But this is not one of them, I think we want to skip.
No.
Especially with no debt involved.
And, and you definitely have-
And it's actually no, other than the condition for, uh, the universal fifteen thousand, nothing coming off the taxpayer on this one, so.
Thanks, Tom.
At least in our case, yeah. So, we will, um, we'll get some data sent out to us so we can try to schedule what kind of agents we hear, representative here, so we can help with that, get it, hopefully we can get that done in the next two weeks, we'll try to get that done.
That'd be great.
Well, I don't make works for things that happen, so I may, uh, we'll do that also when, when we call a meeting. Yeah, we'll just, those are two.
So, we'll take one seventh hand.
Yeah, we gotta do it for the room. So, have a motion to table, I'm number seven.
Yeah, I have a motion to table, um, number seven, review and consider.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
Um, all in favor?
I'm, um-
Alright, and number eight is pertaining to that as well, to-
Resolution, I'll make a motion to table number eight until a special call.
Okay, motion, John, have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those two will be table for a special meeting, uh, to move forward on that. Number nine, review and consider request from Val, Val, a part for an increase in the amount of eight thousand dollars for additional time required to complete three-year audit of Seven Points Lot Nails.
Have we gotten any things for any kind of reform, or anything from them, has they worked more?
We've told your community reports that they've got written up.
Well, I don't think we should give them anything until they give us the way.
Well, can they at least have it down, can they give us enough?
I would like, you do.
Well, we haven't heard of it.
We were supposed to have it by the twenty-eighth of September, is what they told us. That was the date, they told me we wouldn't have it on the twenty-eighth of September, and here we are in the middle of November, we still don't have it. In back there, we approved more money for, uh, two months ago, we approved more money for.
Yeah, but we're done with that.
And now they want more money again, but we still don't have it, and we were supposed to have it on the twenty-eighth of September.
Do we know what the whole of is, or the, the, the issue?
Okay, how they wrote down, I, I was like, where, so I think the, the assist with representation that you worked right now, now they were really bad, and I'm like, when I talked to him, I'm like, that was on there before. I know we're in pain, that was part of some of the stuff we paid for. Well, because he wants to go in, and I've, I've talked to Morgan about this, he wants to go in and just say, okay, this is what you're gonna start your number with, I don't know why we make one number and we're just gonna give this number in, because you say this is what it should have been.
He should show you, uh, what you got there.
So, he, today I asked him, because when he charged, I was trying to reach out to Morgan, and we kind of just miscommunicated. But the guy said, he waited on Morgan to call him.
Can we have him come talk to council?
I'm sorry?
And we haven't actually kind of talked to council and discussed all this? I mean-
Can I have a follow-up with it?
I mean, I, I think that'll help some of the, the rest of us understand what's going on.
Yeah, 'cause I thought it was gonna happen on the twenty-eighth of September, like they told us.
Well, and to, and the residents need to see that there's some kind of install thing going on, not just start burning.
We spent a lot of money on it.
Just because we're paying a bill, not mean they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, have we got any years of a, or is all the years being pinned up by one thing? Is it all being pinned up by?
The, the court reconciliation was a big thing, because it was set up kind of just like your checkbook, as you said.
Somebody did.
For several, yeah, that was for years, that, that's forever. So, um-
It's not, so in government accounting, you're required to do fund accounting, that's never been done here. Um, the grant funds mixed in with the general fund, the seizure fund is mixed in with the general fund, it's all legal, and, and we're required by law to segregate that indefinitely.
So, they tripped into that, and then they had to go back and fix all that, and then start to go through it again. Yeah, exactly right.
It's so hard to manipulate that type of funding tool, so if, if we have to have a special reading on this.
I mean, if we're getting paid a sign, we get everything.
Because they're saying that we gotta give them another eight thousand dollars.
You wanna tie it?
Like an estimate, like an estimate of how much longer this is gonna pay.
Cause we got the final bill.
Because when you're talking to CDU, it's gonna be one of the things that they're gonna ask us, they're gonna want this. Um, because they wanna know that we know how to segregate our grant fund.
That's why I thought we were gonna have it on the twenty-eighth, because we're working on this, but we still don't have it.
Wanna try and put them on the same meeting at the end of the month?
Yes. I'll make a motion for number nine, um, to table the Val and Parks for their increase and ask that they come to the special.
Okay, well, second.
And have a, uh, second? Are we in? I'm in.
They have announced, in case it didn't get mentioned, that is our final bill. So, they're that close to be done, I think they've already started the management layer, they just need a couple of things to verify.
I remember the total bill at one time when we did all this, wasn't it like over thirty thousand dollars?
It was a lot.
It was a lot, because it'd been like, what, ten, fifteen years since we've been there.
Originally, it was twenty, I mean, from these people here, it was twenty-five thousand for three years.
Right.
Then we ended up paying them about eighty-seven hundred dollars more a month ago.
Because of everything that they had to go back and fix, right?
So, is this-
I think that, I think that was a, a full time whenever we were talking about it, it was down the whole time.
Right, so it's sixteen and over.
And they were kinda saying-
It was gonna play that, I don't know, before it's time when it's all said and done.
And you need to, you're, let's say, hands down, auditing for twenty-four.
I mean, we weren't starting ours. Yeah, we weren't starting our county political audit.
Did you see that?
So, we will, with that, we've got a motion to table, okay, so we'll go on to number two. Review and consider decision on insurance policies on new John Deere minutes to grab, so what that is, we're double insur, our insurance picked it up, and we got it through the, the note on the John Deere's. So, they said that if we will drop it from them, that they will credit us, I don't know how much it'll be, but they'll credit so much to our-
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's gonna make that monthly bill, and we're not paying them something that, we're doubling our insurance right now.
So, you're gonna try to drop the John Deere financial, or the?
We're gonna drop the John Deere financial, we're gonna drop that, because our insurance picked it up.
And they're the ones that called us.
And was it cheaper?
Yeah.
It's, it's about the same.
Well, but-
But we're financing that, so it's fine.
Yeah.
Right, you're paying your-
Yeah.
So, we're gonna just, I mean, if y'all want to make a motion to drop the John Deere, and we, because our insurance in-house picked it up.
Yeah, it's covered on T and M.
I need a motion to drop the John Deere insurance, and we don't wanna pay our patients.
Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And they said they'll discredit that back to our, your, for the citizens. Number eleven, review and consider establishment and organization of exemptions for ad val, ad valorem property taxes. We, what she just left, that's-
Yeah, no, yes. I'm gonna get these out for the panel, and you'll have to get it. Cause I'm sorry, we'll split it.
So, we got, we should, we're. So, we have, we've got, we've got news.
We do, we need to look at what we're gonna offer them, like.
So, how do you got it?
So, I think there, so what I think-
We have to have everything made.
I think there should be a freeze. I think there should be a freeze, I don't, or it should be exempt. I don't feel like we should be leaning on our, you know, the citizens, the older, the senior citizens, I was just like, yes, yes.
I think we can get senior as senior freeze. Um, I don't know if we can, I know there's like certain exemptions out there, but it can be an addition too. Um, but you can do the homestead exemption, um, up to twenty percent, taking the, and with not less than five, but up to twenty percent. And that would apply to anybody that can homestead their residence, you know, not even seniors, but I think they automatically get one, um.
Hey, La Joana, when we originally set all this up with the board, when we started this whole process, that was one of the major issues that we brought up.
Yeah.
It was.
Oh, they missed the deadline, oh.
We missed the deadline, that's when we had, had.
Because, yes, that was something that we.
Right, that's what I talked about.
That's why we're starting the board this time, we wanted to address this.
And when Dawn's brought it up several times, I brought it up a few times, citizens have brought it up a few times.
Yes, kinda like the same thing that Tool's doing, it was in the newspaper.
I didn't see what Tool was doing, but.
It was an exemption for seniors and.
The lady in the newspaper saying yes.
Okay, okay.
It was twenty thousand.
Do you know what Tool did?
Ten thousand per homestead. Seniors homesteaded twenty thousand. They went up, and it was five.
They didn't do it for.
It was five thousand, it was a homestead, senior sixty five and living in their home, went up to twenty. I have the newspaper article at home.
And we'll get with Julia so we can get, we can.
So when is it, when is the deadline?
The deadline is early May, so we would.
This will be for the next, because the bills are already, the bills are already.
This is starting right now.
The bills are already out.
It's for the next tax.
They have one.
So they have two years basically.
Yes, for the taxes.
So we just, we get it done next month.
As we get it, yeah, as we get it, us, we got mine set.
We put it back on the agenda for the next one.
By the time we get the ad valorem taxes, the first year, we were already past the deadline, so you don't get them the first year.
Yeah, I got it.
But last year's the one we missed.
Julie has a really good slideshow with all that on there.
Yeah. Okay, so don't need anything on this tonight, we're going to back up to the next one, to try to make decisions.
We gotta get our.
Find out we're doing it.
Yeah, we're definitely. So on that one, um.
I'll make a, yeah, I'll make a motion to table number one weapon for the exemptions for the verlerium property tax. And the reason we're doing that is so we can get all the, the stuff and the documents correct. And then that way we can refer that next month.
Okay. Have a motion? Have a segment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's the carry? Okay, number twelve is review and consider repair replacement of an air conditioner in the Optimus Center. Uh, well, most of you probably know it's the building we ran out down by the baseball field, that we ran out.
I've put bids in there, um, I've had, and, and I know winter's coming on or cooler weather, but. I've had people calling, dispatch calling Tom when they like, he's up here and she wants you to do something, and it's always going out, I mean, it's never working, it's a cold unit.
Is it like a windy unit, is that, is it a?
It's central.
No. Can we do this, a mini split, would a mini split work out better, does heat in there? They work pretty good, and they're cheap.
Five hundred square feet, like. It didn't have to require a five ton unit.
Yeah, you could put two in here. I, I've heard like up to three thousand square feet can, two can do a really good job.
Uh. I see, yeah, what's his name, James? Um, do we still have the number? Oh, he had. We recently got mini splits and they were seven hundred dollars a piece. And I don't know that you're gonna be able to replace a five ton unit two weeks.
Two minutes.
How, how many square feet is that building?
Probably, I don't know, thirty thousand, probably about fifteen hundred.
Especially.
Well, that, that's very, two mini splits will heal that, because the guy that, we just bought a.
Hundred meters.
So that.
The guy that was.
I mean, well, this was thirty feet by, thirty by six feet.
You go see with the, thirty, probably eighteen hundred, they've measured it too.
He just bought ours from, he put, uh, three mini splits in the thirty seven hundred square that had, and he said, stay three.
What?
I see. We were never being.
We need to ask.
So, yeah, because all of these folks here are, you know, they're eighty seven hundred, seventy four hundred, seventy four hundred. Hi, Morgan, but what, so, we've had this discussion before, the inflation in a building is not up to date to be able to carry a smaller unit, that's why we have such a big.
Well, no, I think it is, it's not running out, um.
I mean, maybe it's considered and we have some of them.
Did they go out and get a report and then?
Yes.
It's just yours.
So, I was saying, like, it's no insulation, that's why they had that big unit, there's no insulation. So then you're westbound on electricity, so that way you should get it insulated, right, by insulated? Didn't we have money in the subject?
We did.
With fifty million.
Oh, that res.
Place specific.
I don't, I don't.
Insulation's not there.
But I don't know if that ever.
So maybe we can isolate it and, and.
It may as well work, I don't know, but it'd be a cheaper option if we could go have.
But I ended up with the issue.
And I guess I was gonna ask, being that we're talking about air conditioners, did you kind of make this contract with somebody? With, um, integrity for all of our services here at one time?
We, we did, the first year, it's expired, and, and, uh, he gave me, when he gave me that bid down there, he said if we would do that one. And the one over here at the same time, then he would take care of all of our units on our maintenance contract for the next year, so. We're not buying both of them at one time.
And the good thing is, he's a citizen of Seven Place.
Yes.
And keeping the business level is important.
But we don't have one right now, we can always. Yeah, one in safety.
I mean, it's a different. I am, but I don't know.
You know, the strength.
No, for example. Any given.
Yeah, there are two. Hey, real quick, can I just give some people for what y'all were talking about?
You can't hear me, this is all you're. You can't hear, you don't.
I was just gonna make a comment off what y'all were talking about.
I really wanted to know if you could.
Sure, just a quick comment, the building is a little bit bigger, it won't handle the, uh, the mini slits because of the insulation, the opening door traffic, and. You're renting a building, so it's gonna at least take that unit, that unit is old down there, it's probably not been best taken care of, the mini slits do take a lot more maintenance. When you might have wired, and hope nobody don't steal the outside units, so, uh. But you got insurance, so whatever, you know, but when you've got that much traffic, it's not like our home, you know, it's, uh. People open, they close the door, and if they're not cool, and they're gonna sweat, over their food, and if they're not gonna rent them all. There's doors on them.
Yeah, and they get to.
We insulated.
Yeah, we, we had talked about that before, about having a company come in and spray foam that.
With the money aside, they fixed that building up a little bit.
Yeah, I, I think that would definitely.
Okay, so you all.
I don't even know what y'all's bid is, to give them your action for him.
They're, we got from seventy six hundred to nine thousand.
That's probably higher.
All right.
Seventy four hundred.
What I can say is, that's, you can't order them, you can't order a five ton unit off the internet, which I did it myself. For a heck of a lot cheaper than what you're gonna get it from a contractor, just saying, that is an option.
And then just have somebody.
Put the company that you buy on, on the internet warranty.
Yeah.
I actually have a better warranty from the place that it's very, come off the internet. Yeah, I wouldn't.
Do we want to collect more options and figure things out first? To make sure that these people, I mean, have these people actually know their book?
Yes, that is.
So maybe.
Everyone's.
See what, see what other options we have as, as, as opposed to insulation, because I mean, we, that's probably, you can get that.
I'll get one for, uh, is that H back there?
I make a motion to, of the table, the, for Karen, I think that's a clear intention, I'll come later.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yeah, I think, what's, uh, to table?
I got mine.
I'm trying. Yeah. Three and a half thousand.
It's lying.
See now, there's.
Okay. Number thirteen, review and for further clarification, consider setting date for council workshop, discuss falling items for determination, determine what action to take regarding the same. This, this is, I guess, what we do, just so you know, when we get the stuff sent in, or gen items, we send it to the attorney and he sends it back to us, and that's how we do it. Uh, so he, he thought this needed to be put down, uh, to, to review, some of this, he said we need to probably do it in workshops to figure out what we're gonna actually do, since it was so broad. So.
And workshops are public.
Yes, absolutely.
Please come.
You're more than welcome to come to the workshops.
Does then, um, can counsel get the city attorney's number, so we can reach out to them or something?
He's actually gonna try to.
Yeah, he's gonna come to you. I don't know if he can make this special, but maybe he can.
Some of these things, I don't know how you can narrow them down, when you're actually just looking at a policy suggesting, then it's that kind of thing, I don't know how you can get more specific than that.
The way, the way he put it to us was, in order to have an actionable item on your agenda, you have to have an actionable item. So in other words, you have to have in the component of the, uh, line item, there has to be something that the people can tell what is going to have action taken on it.
So amending a, a personnel policy is not an actionable?
It depends on how you wanna do it, yeah.
We've done that before in the past.
Well, we've, we've proved one and done all that, but to actually put it on there to take an action, you have to have an actionable item. You gotta tell, we've also got a different attorney now.
Well, I don't understand how, that's my, that's my question, how is not amending a personnel policy not a very, very.
Well, probably, I mean, I mean, the personnel policy is awful broad about.
Yeah, generally, generally, when you amend the personnel policy, you'll come in with what you think needs to be amended and put on your agenda.
I mean, if you wanna give us more vacation time or something, or.
In other words, it's the actual paragraph for the actual policy, not the whole policy itself. It has to be something that the people can put their eyes on.
And that's my question, has it done the same, the exact same thing in the past, so I didn't understand.
Because we have.
I would have learned, so it must be.
It was, it was. It's actually something that Tom Law did last, a year or two, two years ago.
We had, we had way back then. Now, the young, uh, now we're looking at. Just so you know, you already know, Joe Porfida was, uh, Nicholas Jackson, newer agent.
Can you say that again, Bo?
Joe Porfida, Porfida, I'm sorry, P O R F I D A.
He's on here, right?
Yes.
He's here.
And what's the, the name of that firm?
He's with, uh, David Dodds firm, Nicholas Jackson, newer agent.
Term of sexual sentencing.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Yeah.
Just Google his name.
And that's just four other names, there's actually twelve of them there.
Yeah, it's an, it's an entire firm that specializes in nothing but, um, municipal law, and each of the attorneys have a specialty, and they all.
Was this, was it Allen or anything?
No, but I have the authority to hire one of them, because we were left without an attorney after looking, resigning on Monday, so I reached out to these guys and got them on board, so we were, we were protected. So do y'all, uh, I know we're looking at what, maybe two weeks for a work, or to do the, uh, special call meeting, or a week or two weeks, whatever, we'll begin today. And then make sure we can have, uh, the people that's doing the audit here as well, do y'all that, and we got holiday coming up, so do y'all wanna try to do a workshop or something to go over some of this stuff, or?
I think a lot of this stuff needs to be discussed and, and resolved sooner than later, so sooner we can get, get it done.
You can, you can do a workshop and, and, um, special quality thing, but just not at the same time. So you have one at six, one at seven, you want to.
Requirement for.
Get with Andy? And I'll get with Andy.
Yeah, requirement is a workshop, we got three, I believe, that on the special call meeting for, that's, that's ridiculous.
So we can, we can let's set up, I said, just, we can just do it in an hour or four, so. You'll do it for that?
I'll see if we can have the attorney there that night, if you'd like.
They sent me the question, oh, my, at least a meeting, but my point meeting to, without a question meeting.
Either that, or just be able to, you know, ask them questions and, and sit down and talk with them and say, you know, here's, here's the thing that we're concerned with, and these are the things that, you know, tell me how, you know, it's just specific that you're asking.
Okay.
Um, because, because a lot of.
So, we, uh, do you wanna just make a motion that we'll put this, or the special meeting, have a workshop before it?
We probably need to do it after, so that way we know we have time.
After, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and then that way, the people that need to.
But that one could at least get a hold on that.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so have a motion that we set it up the same time after the special meeting?
I'll make a motion on number thirteen, um, for the council workshop to be set after the special meeting, which we'll get a date.
Which approved date, but all of us, and never, but all the other parties. Okay, have a motion, have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's your carries?
So, what, all of these things? Why, why would you table all of these things? Or.
That's what he's saying, the attorney.
Was just a workshop for all of these things, that way we can't talk about them onto not such a, it's, uh.
I thought you were tabling that one specific item.
Well, there's all of these, that these.
Well, they're all different things, they're all different, there's that one thing, there's other workshops that we're asking for that don't have anything to do with that particular one. So I've asked for, the number one is an organizational charge for the city, I've asked for that, I have not received it.
We even have one?
Well, I'm asking us, can we create?
Sure, that's what you were doing workshop.
I wanna go through some of these things that I've been asking.
But that's, that's what the workshop, we create the, bring to the council, to, to the meetings, but we.
Her point probably is that somebody should have said, we don't have one.
Well, that's a, that, I think that is a big point, that is, in the conversations and the comments, and, and now here, instead of a common courtesy to the council members that are asking it and saying. You know, what is it about this that you're wanting, can you be more specific, we're not even given that opportunity, we're not communicated with, we're just shut down and push aside, shut down.
I get your request, and I send it to the attorney.
But couldn't you ask us?
I don't.
Say, hey, the attorney's saying, can you be more specific?
We didn't get it back till, till like Monday night, before we got.
These things have been requested for the past three months, a lot of them.
Well, the last meeting we didn't have, because we didn't have enough people to have a forum, you know, we got canceled. That meeting got canceled.
Right, but it wasn't put on there, then either, but it's been, some of these things have been pretty requested for.
It was on the, on the discussion.
In a three month timeframe, somebody wanted us that unable to, I wasn't finished, he was interrupting me.
I'm sorry.
In a three month time period, one of us should have been addressed and said, hey, you know, but, but we're not given that common courtesy or that common respect.
So we can go over the stuff under thirteen in the workshop. Yeah, and we could come up with something that y'all wanna take action on, and then we could bring it back to the council, so people get to see what we've done, before we're spoken on, they get to, the citizens get to see what we're.
Is the email from the attorney in their package? I'm sorry, I thought you were in there. Okay, um. Couldn't you tell them, like, you want to pull it out and, and, real quick, and you wanna pay that to you?
No, you don't have to hold all these people up. No, you don't have to hold all these people up.
Okay, just, just the email explain why he set the, uh, agenda item up for that, uh, items. All right, that's got thirteen, so fourteen, review and consider adjournment.
I made a motion to the attorney.
Make the motion? You have a second?
So, maybe I'll say two seconds.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank y'all, y'all for coming.
Gerald, why? He's buying dinner.
Nope. Yeah, because he taking this big, what he talking about?
We're doing a five order, seven years. That's, uh, that's kind of what we got planned for, my people. Professional opinion is that we should use the grant, save some fresh, uh, fresh, just, uh, much better longer lasting roads, ditch. Yeah, I don't know, just do that in two miles, and it would, that would probably, you know, get that grant, and these guys up there, mark, they know, so, they do that. That would be like the first, you know, the second year, we're sure, if, if we could do that, we might get a nice road on top of hill, and get, and, uh, you know, just ways down there.
See, there's a lot of traffic, everybody cuts through.
Yeah, they're coming through.
Yeah. Tools got a better road than, than.
Annie's, well, they got a better road. But that's.
Well, y'all, the county.
They can't get that, we're missing a lot of it. But I guarantee you, we could definitely come up with something, but, but, that's the reason we said, we already, we already got the money for the first year. We got the county doing chip shit, a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
They say it's.
Yeah.
But, uh, that, we've got enough now for the first two miles, probably, this grant, maybe we can just make up.
You gotta have a good place, you know, you. You gotta.
They don't return it, have the grants, it's here for, they grant. But, that's their problem, that's what they want. Exactly, we, for the engineering thing, get that.
Yeah, we got greater, she was raised the road.
I'm gonna take, two years to go, now we got nothing money to.
What's the number that she got?
But just like you, do it all on the road, and then go road, and do the road, and then go make quick. All right. Thank y'all for coming.
Y'all have a good day.
You too.